We'll call the Reno City Planning Commission for April 2nd to order. Would everybody please stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance? Okay, could we have roll call, please?
Commissioner Kaufman?
Here.
Commissioner Stapleton?
Here.
Commissioner Olivas?
Here.
Commissioner Reno?
Here.
Commissioner Taylor absent. Commissioner Wysocki?
Here.
Commissioner Wolsey?
Here.
We'll open public comments. These items are for items not on the agenda. If you have a public comment to make that doesn't have to deal with any of the items on the agenda, if you please fill out a request to speak form and then also... Okay, I do have one request to speak. So, this is...this one's actually for the agenda. Jana, would you mind speaking afterwards? After the presentation?
Well, I wanted to introduce the presentation.
Excuse me? Oh, you're introducing the presentation. Okay. You don't need to fill this out then. I'm sorry. No problem.
Can I do public comment?
Let us get through this. Couple more items here and then we'll have you come up. Thank you. Is there anybody else that'd like to speak? Did you fill out a request to speak form?
I will, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Fred Trenier, Community Development Director. And today, this is not on the agenda, that's why I'm under the public comment, but I wanted to inform the Planning Commission that the city is looking at updating the master plan, the city's master plan. And under NRS 278.150, that is under the purview of the Planning Commission. So you do have a responsibility under NRS for the master plan. And we are calling this process Think Reno. And Think Reno, we're going before the city council on April 17th to talk to them about funding this comprehensive plan process, which will include a visioning for the city of Reno, specifically asking the questions, what do we want to be when we grow up? We have community forums that are being set up right now and you probably have received emails lately regarding those community forums. And we do look for the Planning Commission's active participation in this process. Again, some of the outcomes from this comprehensive plan process will be an update of our master plan and our implementation tools, which includes Title 18, which is our nuts and bolts of our development code, the capital improvement program, and possibly some neighborhood plans in the process. So I wanted to give the Planning Commission this update of what we're doing and we will have subsequent presentations to the Planning Commission and solicit your input. Thank you.
Very good. Thanks, Fred. Seeing and hearing no one else, I'll close public comments. And approval for the minutes for March 5th of our regular meeting? Could I have a motion to approve the minutes?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Wysocki, I'm so moved.
Commissioner Stapleton, second motion.
A motion. A motion and a second. All in favor, sign of by saying aye.
Mr. Chair?
Aye.
I have to withdraw my second. I wasn't here and accuse myself of voting on this. Sorry.
Mr. Chair, does Commissioner Wolsey ask second motion?
Okay, so I do have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Commissioner Stapleton abstains.
And one abstention. Next item is a city council's liaison report. I guess we don't have one since Claudia's not here. Okay, now, update from the Washoe County Food Policy Council.
My name is Amy and I am an intern with the planning department at the city of Reno. So for updates with the Washoe County Food Policy Council, my responsibility was basically a liaison between the planning department and the council. I attended one meeting of theirs and basically found out that I was more responsible to look over anything about the master plan or within the municipal code to see if there's any sort of food access or some sort of policy that's been implemented. So as far as the master plan, as far as my findings goes, there really isn't anything in regards to food access policy. Within the municipal code, I do find a couple of agricultural uses such as farming. Some of their allowed zones is, you know, the large lot residentials and the open space zonings. Then there's just a couple of regulations on those. And then I also found a temporary use called urban farming. And the definition is the growing, raising, and selling of agricultural, horticultural, viticultural, and vegetable products of the soil and up to 12 fowl in an urban setting as a temporary principal land use. So that use is allowed for three years and then after, if people do decide to maintain that use, they would have to get a site plan review. All that. So as far as the Washoe County Food Policy Council, their mission is to support a vibrant, healthy, and equitable local food system for Washoe County. In October, it's 2011, the Washoe County District Board of Health established the Washoe County Food Policy Council as a volunteer partnership to bring together representation from all sectors of the food system for networking, collaboration, and promotion of access to healthy foods. The council is in charge with implementing the goals of the Washoe County Food Plan and to work towards reducing barriers so that all residents have access to healthy food. As part of the council members, they represent a diverse sector of the local food system and the community at large. They encompass community food planning, consumers, food and nutrition data systems, surveillance and monitoring, food distribution, food preparation, food production, and public food programs. So for the presenter of today's meeting, her name is Lisa Hill. She brings a lifelong interest in food, cooking, health, agriculture, and politics to the council. She translates nutrition science into practical solutions for her individual and institutional clients so they may achieve optimal health and well-being through eating healthy. She was instrumental in helping the Washoe County School District adopt a healthy eating policy back in 2006 and continues to work towards improving the livability of the West University neighborhood. She has extensive experience helping low-income clients plan and prepare healthy diets on a limited budget and will work towards a more equitable food system for Washoe County. Today she will be giving a broad food policy goal, which will cover key data illustrating the need for the broad policies. She will also present case studies of what other places are doing in regards to their master plan and specific examples of zoning ordinances.
So, thank you so much for having me back. Really happy to be here tonight. As you can tell from the introduction, I am not a planner. I'm not a developer. I'm not...I don't work in the construction industry. I've spent my life trying to get people to eat healthier. And it's really exciting to have a cross-pollination of ideas with planning. It's kind of strange that I'm here talking to you about urban food system planning, but here I am. And I think one of the things that we can agree on here tonight, all of us in this room, is that we all want to live in a healthy and prosperous community. And to those ends, I would like to talk to you a little bit about incorporating healthy food access components into some of our long-term physical and economic visioning for our community. I'm going to provide you examples of broad food planning goals that would be included in master planning. And I'm going to give you lots and lots of resources, including case studies from other cities. To prepare for the talk tonight, I went into the current city of Reno council priorities. And there's two in particular that really stand out as very compatible with healthy food access planning. And that is providing safe and livable neighborhoods and providing a sustainable and vibrant economy. So what I'd like to do next is just take you through some examples of broad master planning goals, give you a little bit of data to justify why they're important, and then we'll...Amy referenced a little bit about some of the things that are going on in the city, and then I'll go into some more specific examples from other communities. The first thing that I want to talk about as a broad policy goal is supporting and promoting good nutrition and health. We know that optimal health is very important for many different sectors of our community. Businesses want healthy employees, schools need healthy children, and we all want to live in a healthy community. Many of the chronic diseases that are disabling us and killing us are chronic diseases that are entirely preventable through lifestyle changes, including accessing a healthy diet. I have spent over 30 years trying to educate people about choosing healthy eating and I can tell you those efforts are largely failing, as evidenced by the fact that our health is getting worse, our health insurance costs are climbing, it's now becoming an economic factor. And so people in my profession are starting to look at creating healthy environments for people to live. And I think anybody in the room here who has tried to ascribe to a healthy diet knows that you really have to work hard in order to get healthy foods. And you're probably going to pay a little more too. So we would like to see more healthy environments in our community through efforts like master planning. The other thing I want to touch on is, as a policy goal, is to facilitate community food security and economic access to safe and healthy food. One, over one in four children in our community are food insecure, and that rate continues to grow. It's gotten especially worse during the downturn. One in six of our residents are food insecure in total. And this has profound effects for children's readiness to learn in the community, for the workforce to be ready to work in the industries that we want to attract to our community, and that it also has long-term powerful effects on health and well-being. We know that gardens in communities, we want to support new and existing opportunities for urban agriculture and gardens. There is data to support the notion that neighborhoods that have gardens, property values increase and there in turn has the potential to increase tax revenue. We also know that gardens in communities decrease crime. And we have an example here of Reno in the garden downtown. We know that there is a demand for local food production and sales. And whenever we buy locally, we know that that money circulates at a higher rate, as evidenced by the fact that the city of Reno has instituted a buy local campaign. There's opportunity out there with healthy local food. There's also issues related to the environment, climate change, and I'm going to play a little video explaining a bit about that. What am I doing? Okay, here we go.
When we think about global warming, we think about transportation, we think about how we heat our houses. But in fact, how we eat has just as big an impact on climate change. The average item of food in America has traveled 1,500 miles from the farm to your plate. It's burned up an incredible amount of fossil fuel just to get there. If you're eating lettuce, say, in New York that's been grown in California, one of those bags of pre-washed mixed lettuce, it takes 56 calories of fossil fuel energy to deliver one calorie of food energy to your plate. For the consumer to understand how, you know, how much energy goes into their food, I think all they have to understand is, you know, if it's local, it's less, and if it is unprocessed. A lot of the energy in our food comes from processing. All the complicated steps needed to make a Twinkie a Twinkie, you know, all use vast amounts of energy. There are great many other benefits to eating locally besides conserving energy. There is, I think, the very important benefit of keeping farmers in business. Farmers add a lot to a community. They have great wisdom about the natural world. And then there is the view. There's a wonderful bumper sticker in Europe called Eat Your View. And the premise is that if you don't support these agricultural landscapes around you, they will be sprawled, they will be covered with houses and highways and shopping malls. And the way to keep them open is to eat from the farms that constitute that view. Reserve those agricultural landscapes is eating from those farms.
Okay, so I just recently spoke to the farmers, Lost City Farms, and I asked them, and I know you know about them because they came to you for the urban farming ordinance last year, and I said, "How are things going?" And they said, "Better than expected. The demand for their local produce is strong, more than they can supply, and that the area around their farm has had a lot of collateral improvements." We know that the demand for local, safe, healthy food is one of the fastest-growing food sectors. And there is a webinar, these links that are on the PowerPoint slide take you directly to resources that I would like to provide to you. And this particular slide takes you to a webinar on food sector innovation and investment that is particularly targeted towards cities, looking at key investments in the healthy food sector, looking at assets in the community, the nature of available opportunities and key investments. And Kate Thomas has looked at this webinar and is very interested in some of the ideas there. We see this as a continued growth sector and we would like to see Reno get involved in this in a bigger way. And then I'll just mention really briefly once again, the drag on the economy in terms of poor health of employees will continue to grow unless we do something about the food environment. I noticed one of the commissioners mentioned reducing solid food-related waste was an important issue and we would agree with that. And so many of these different policy goals would be part of a comprehensive type of master plan. Okay, so Amy briefly mentioned that there's currently no mention of healthy food access planning in the master plan. And actually, I wanted to start by commending both Nathan Gilbert and the Planning Commission and Jessica Sfaraza for the efforts about a year or two ago of implementing the urban farm ordinance. This was a fantastic first step to getting our local food system going. So we know that that's there, but we...there's a lot more that could be done. We would like to see clearer accommodations for commercial food production and sales and clearer accommodations for different types of urban agriculture ventures in our community. So what are some specific examples? What are other cities doing about this issue? This is an example of a comprehensive plan from Seattle. You can see really simple master planning goals. Healthy food for all, grow local, strengthen the local economy, prevent, reuse, recycle food waste. This is an example from the Milwaukee area. They have incorporated food issues in their land use and mass...the land use and conservation elements of their master plan. And a lot of the communities that are in that upper Midwest area where there's been a lot of population shrinkage, they're going more towards reusing and reutilizing underutilized property and buildings in the city. And so you'll see here as an example, in their master plan, they support temporary and permanent reuse of city vacant and underutilized property. And then they also have a lot of information on the web there to help people navigate that. Kansas City has what they call a climate protection plan. And there are food elements in that master plan, promoting residential neighborhood food production, promoting metropolitan food production. And they are reorganizing their waste management division to be more of a recovery management department. And then to go along with that, they have a really nice guide to urban agriculture codes. This is an example from Baltimore. Baltimore has set up a commission on sustainability and there is an entire sector devoted to the food system of Baltimore. Baltimore is kind of an interesting example because their university plays really heavily into this commission on sustainability. The Johns Hopkins University has a Center for Liveable Future that is very involved in this particular plan. We just met recently with UNR and we know that there's a food system analyst up at UNR who is working right now to help local small food sector businesses develop their business plans to grow the local food sector. And we would suggest this as a possible model for our area. We've talked a lot about how we're a university town and so we would like to collaborate not only with the city but also the university and bring in some of their ideas. In their particular plan, they're looking at increasing the percentage of land under cultivation, improving the quantity and the quality of food available, increased demand for locally-produced healthy foods, and so on. And then along with that, they've updated their zoning regulations and worked with the health department on updating some animal husbandry regulations. So, at this point in time, you've got a little taste for broad planning goals. I was really interested to hear from Fred wherever you are, that the city is now looking at master planning. We would really like to be involved with that. You've seen a few examples from other communities. And so, you know, just if I could get a sense for, you know, what the commissioners' thoughts are on this, you know, where we're at, what kinds of things make sense for moving forward at this point? Any comments or questions or direction?
Let us get through...we'll probably have questions. Let me get the public comments and then Lisa will bring you back up.
Okay. Sure. And I just want to mention also for the commissioners, if you haven't had a chance to review the presentation carefully prior to the meeting, the PDF that I sent you by email in the electronic form has the hyperlinks to all of the resources that were presented to you tonight. And...go ahead, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Okay, I'll open public comments and if I have anybody else that'd like to comment on this, if you'd please fill out a request to speak form for us. And this is Jana Vanderhar.
Yes, my name is Jana Vanderhar. I'm a landscape architect and also serve on the Washoe County Food Policy Council. I just wanted to add a public comment on food security and some general numbers. Food security means having access to healthy food at any time, every day, for your entire family, your household. And Nevada Department of Health and Human Services just reported last year that from 2007 to 2010, there was a 50% increase in the households in Nevada that were food insecure, meaning they didn't have access every day, all the time, to healthy foods. That was more than 200,000 households. Now, that was in the entire state, but you can imagine that Reno is part of that. And so if we look at those numbers, I think that we can do a lot in our city, in the city of Reno, to plan for food security here with the master plan amendments, with ordinances and codes. And so when you're looking at different projects that come across your desk, think about food security and how those projects would affect that. In particular, farmland conservation, open space, how can we incorporate more community gardens, more urban farming like we did here with Lost City Farm? But also in terms of economic opportunities. Right now, if we support our local farmers and we want to provide, for instance, melons to the kids in schools, those melons need to be sent to Sacramento to be cut up into portions and then sent back to us to be distributed to the schools. So there's a huge economic opportunity here for us to have a local food processing facility. So if we look at the big puzzle of economic opportunities, there are more of those kinds of business opportunities that will help the food security. And just wanted to introduce that and ask you to think about that in future projects. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there any more public comments, anybody? Okay.
Is it okay if I fill out the form after I speak?
Sure.
My name's Haley Anderton-Fulmer for the record, and I'm also on the Food Policy Council. Sorry to bombard you with all of us giving you a comment. But for me, the issue that we have right now is not so much what's in our local planning ordinances and what's currently in our master plan, but what's not there. I mean, if you look at the public housing that's in the city of Reno, you see these wonderful lush lawns in front, but...and we're paying to maintain that. And these people are on food assistance typically and yet we don't have any land support, you know, any space for them to grow carrots if they want to, to take their own food production into their own hands. So, I mean, there's a lot of ways that we can learn from other cities to better support food security in our town and also reduce the burden on local government. And I know we're cash-strapped, so it's something to think about. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. And, yeah, would you make sure that you fill out a request to speak form? Okay, I'll close public comments, bring it back to the commissioners.
Mr. Chairman, before you start that, I have a disclosure that I received an email on this and also spoke with the presenter this evening over the phone.
Okay. Any other disclosure?
I have also received an email on this.
Commissioner Reno, I did too.
Commissioner Stapleton, I also received emails and spoke with the presenter.
Commissioner Olivas, I received email also.
And Commissioner Kaufman, I also did. So I'll bring it back to the commissioners. Any questions for the presenter?
Any comments? Yeah. Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Reno, can you talk more about open space and using of open space and what does that mean? And where are we talking, within the midtown area? I mean, what kind of open space?
Well, just to give you an example, our council met with Kate Thomas and she's just completed an inventory of underutilized or unused city land and also property within the city of Reno limits. And it's really all over the map. It could be easements, it could be...like there's a piece of property across from my house that is zone single-family, seven, that's been an open piece of city property as long as I've lived there, 25 years. So it's really kind of all over the map. And one of the concepts that we talked about with her that she thought was a pretty reasonable thing to do would be to take that inventory of underutilized property and see if there are any of those properties that would make sense to turn into either urban agriculture opportunities or possibly even a community kitchen or food production, kind of like what Jana was talking about, as one concept. Excuse me. The other best practice from other communities are setting up what's called food incubators, where you allow small businesses to product test and pilot test some of their product that would partner with the city, who sees this as an important economic aspect of our growth and development. And so then we would partner those properties with those startup companies to work on their food product. Is that kind of getting at what you're...
Yeah, no, I guess it is. So how does this work? Do they lease the property from the city? Or does the city give them access to the property?
Well, that's what we're proposing, is that we look into some of this. Some of the exploratory next steps could include considering healthy food access planning in the master plan as a starting point, opportunity there. And then another possible is to consider... And then another possible is to consider, you know, a work group that would look into, well, what would make the most sense for our community, perhaps with your input, perhaps with staff from the city, with input from our council or other stakeholders to see, well, where are the greatest opportunities for us, the low-hanging fruit that we could look into? Does that make sense? We don't, there's, it could be, the answer could be really anything. It's up to us to look into what's possible.
So, so no pun here, but the low-hanging fruit. What about the gleaning projects in the city of Reno? Can you speak to that?
Gleaning?
Gleaning.
What?
A lot of, yeah, for fruits. And, you know, I know that there is a, I think there was going to be some discussion on gleaning. But, you know, growing up, we lived over here off of Mayberry. My parents had cherry trees, peach, plums, pears. And we would go out and we would take all the fruit and we'd can it and store it up. So, but there is a lot of fruit trees and for that matter, there's walnut trees. There's a lot of trees that are, all this food is going to waste within the city.
Exactly, exactly.
Is there any, any kind of project to go and gather it from homeowners?
Absolutely. In fact, there's two concepts with that is, one, using existing edible landscaping to redistribute it to the population in various ways. And number two is to install more edible landscaping, pairing it with things like redistribution apps, allowing people to gather this food and hold mini farmer farm stands in various neighborhoods. And so, for example, in the old Southwest, if there's a lot of food being produced, we could ask the city for the proper ordinances, zoning and permitting to allow residents to do like a mini farm stand in a city park, as an example. This is actually happening in other communities where people are gathering food as part of their edible landscaping and they're redistributing it either for food or just to people that need it in various different ways. So absolutely, that could be, that could be a part of the plan.
Okay, thanks.
Hi, thanks Lisa. I have a question about the different ways that we might see new types of agriculture or maybe that, the different way that new types of agriculture are appearing in other cities. I think in Reno, we're familiar with the farm, the urban farm over on Center Street where they took a blighted piece of property and turned it into a farm. I think that was the impetus for the urban farming ordinance that we looked at last year or year before last. And, but besides that, are there other models?
So, so you're asking for some examples of other types of food, of gardening?
Well, if you could just let me finish. In terms of maybe in industrial areas or hydroponics or indoor growing or just things that we haven't seen yet here in Reno but that might be seen in other cities, so other models in addition to the urban farm, you know, on a lot that's not being used, maybe in industrial areas or?
Okay. I might punt to Jana here because she's more of an expert, but school gardens is one example, the edible landscaping, indoor farming. Do you want to add anything else?
Another example would be rooftop gardening or against the wall, gardening against the wall. There's raised planters, there's garage on front, on top of parking garages, there's big farms going up there.
Farm trucks, or farm trucks. I've heard about farm trucks that drive around.
You know, actually floodplain land is also really great for agriculture. So floodplain and flooding, flooding and agriculture go hand in hand. And so, very often those lands are set aside for grazing or for orchards, things like that.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Wieske. Specifically, what is preventing healthy food access in our master plan or city ordinances right now? What's preventing it from developing and growing, going forward?
Well, the way that I see master planning, it's our collective desire of where we want to take our community and there's, it's the absence of the discussion about the importance of the food system that's the problem. So the fact that it's not in the master plan, the fact that, you know, aside from the urban farming ordinance, there is very little said about it in our ordinances, zoning and permitting, it makes it difficult for homeowners, it makes it difficult for businesses to know what they can and can't do. But on a bigger picture, it says something about what, where we want to move towards. And so, we're just starting the conversation of wanting our community to move towards a more sustainable and healthy food system. And we do that typically in the city through master planning. So all of us, you know, periodically will sit down and decide what's important for our community and this is definitely, it's the absence of that conversation in all of our documents.
So do you consider this, that the city needs to modify their master plan or to adopt policy and promote policy for healthy food access? Because those are two different things.
If I were to choose one of those, I would say incorporating healthy food access planning in the master plan is what we're asking for.
Okay.
Do you want to speak about that at all?
Go ahead.
Thank you. Through the chair, Fred Turnier, Community Development Director. And just to put a frame around it from a staff perspective, is that Amy was correct when she did her analysis and that we do not have per se a conversation in our master plan for local food policy. Any type of local food policy, we may touch it here and there. Probably one of the biggest pushes we had in the past on the master plan was energy conservation. So we have some energy conservation type of master plans, policies. And the policies are those, the guidelines. They're guidelines for the city council, planning commission, for the community to look at when determining level of services to what you see a lot is the development that's occurring on the ground. And so that's the linkage, is that before we jump typically, theoretically, before you jump into an ordinance, there's some type of community discussion which turns into a master plan policy. Master plan policy could be that, you know, the scale of a transit corridor should be about four stories because that's more of a walkable human scale. And here are some pictures and there's policies associated with that, just for example. Right now, we have the absence of that for food and for the sustainable aspects of the food policy. So what we've been telling the Washoe County Food Policy Group is, let's, before we jump into, you know, we need to have ordinances, we're going to distribute the land on out there, let's have a discussion in the community about what we want. And, you know, basically go forward to see if that's something the community even wants to have. And if I could just throw in a quick little infomercial here regarding our comprehensive plan update, we actually have a couple of meetings coming up that would be a great opportunity to start having that dialogue. Starting with April 17th with Councilman Delgado at the Neal Road Women's and Children's Center. April 21st, Councilmember Shivi at the Reno Collective. April 22nd with Councilman Dorch at the State Airport. April 23rd with Councilwoman Jordan at the McQueen Fire Station. April 24th with Councilwoman Zadra at the Damone Ranch Fire Station. And April 29th with Councilwoman Breckus for the, at the Collin Ranch HOA. Those are the community forums which we're going to, we want to hear from the neighbors, we want to hear from the community about what they care about, what they want the city to do. And that would be a vehicle to actually start some of this dialogue.
Okay. Fred, since you're standing there, maybe you might answer this next question then. When we as a planning commission look at landscaping, residentially or commercially, we look at a percentage of coverage. I went back since my conversation earlier in the week about this agenda item and looked into our landscaping requirements. And I don't see anything that would preclude a developer, a landowner from creating edible sources of, as far as their landscaping. It just says that it, you know, there needs to be a certain coverage. Is that something that the city would like to be more specific on? Or is that part of what this, I guess, the planning, the future planning for healthy food access could cover?
That could, Fred Turnier, Community Development Director, that could cover those type of issues. We do have flexibility in there where we can have edible plant material. I think our code specifically may talk to evasive species, but there's nothing precluding that from right now. I think the issue that the council is bringing up, the Food Policy Council, is that it's not at the forefront of the community's conscious, consciousness right now. And that's a process that they're looking to engage with the community, with the planning commission to raise that level up. Similar to what we did with energy conservation a couple of years ago, that at this point it's food, it's food policy. And again, the master plan is a living, breathing document for the planning commission. And it is your document under NRS, the planning commission's document. So this is an appropriate era or area to have that discussion in. I would recommend that we also get city council's involvement in this process because, again, we don't want to go down a path that the council may not want to do at this time.
Okay, thank you very much. No further questions. Mr. Chairman.
Fred, since you're up there, Commissioner Kaufman. So, are we going to have some workshops and different things similar to what we did on, you know, some of the TODs and some of the, in this process also?
In the bigger comprehensive planning process, and again, we're looking to go before the city council on April 17th to get their buy-in, but because the outcome is a master plan, some of the outcomes, and the master plan is owned by the planning commission, that in these community forums coming up, will lead into this comprehensive plan process, that I wanted to inform you of what's going on and to also let the community know that we do have these community forums coming up. And specifically, we envision possibly up to an 18-month, a two-year process on the comprehensive plan process and then updates of the master plan would come from that. Currently, we are kicking off the university master plan, just some of the preliminary scoping of that. That's separate than, you know, the overall master plan, but looking to do an overhaul of the master plan, we will look to the comprehensive plan, the bigger umbrella to help us update that section. So I do see many meetings, workshops, subcommittee meetings, depending on where the community would like to go on some of the desires that are out there. And again, our master plan, we have three minimum requirements, conservation, population, housing. So those are your three minimum requirements under NRS. Right now, our plan has a lot more than that, but that's what the community has defined as what they would want.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Stapleton?
Commissioner Stapleton, just to follow up, Director Turnier. So, in terms of how that process would work of the master plan update, if, as a result of input from community forums, then it goes to council and would council have to then give direction on some of the master plan stuff specifically? So if we did want to, you know, supporting the local food network and promoting healthy food access was one of our goals as a planning commission, so if that were to be something that were to fit specifically into the master planning process, is that something that we would have to take direction from council on? Or is that something that we would initiate here in terms of if that was a goal of ours and we wanted to work on, if there was interest in working on a piece of that policy for the master plan? I guess, more elaboration on how the process works.
Sure. Fred Turnier, Community Development Director, I would recommend that the city council give direction to go forward with this. Again, the planning commission, you do own the master plan, but final approval is the city council. So I would go back to the city council and get direction from the city council to make it their priority also. And then we can, we can all move forward together. And how that fits, that will fit into looking at the comprehensive plan, but we can also look at, as we're moving forward, maybe subcommittees to explore some immediate low-hanging fruit type items as was brought up to address some of the immediate issues regarding the food policy. But I would recommend that we go to city council first.
Any other questions from the council? Okay. Then discussion between?
Mr. Chairman, just to start off by saying in this session, I think this has been a great discussion. I'm learning a lot and I really want to follow up on what Commissioner Wieske was saying is, what in our policy is prohibiting it? What just needs to be stated more clearly? And what do we actually need to work on putting in there as new items? And I'm really curious about that because I agree that it seems like some of this can be done as-is even though it's very vague in our code, you know, whether or not you can and cannot do this. Or if you go to look it up, it may not state anything. Hence the ratios and of actual coverage versus residential use. And even though, even though the urban farming took care of a little bit of that, seems like there's a lot bigger of an opportunity to define on a much broader scale what can be done. So, it's a great conversation.
Commissioner Stapleton, I would just say that in general, I'm definitely in support of looking at articulating some better food policy goals in the master plan. And I don't even know if this is the venue to say that, but I'm on the board for the Great Basin Community Food Co-op here in town. And just through that experience, I've seen the economic impact that promoting and providing a market for local food can provide to our community. I think the co-op, just because they exist, has provided a market for producers that started out, part-time producers, you know, folks that weren't even in farming. And they've, you know, sort of promoted an entrance into that and really a pretty positive impact on our local and regional economy. So I think it's important and I for one am definitely in support of, you know, when the time comes, hopefully with direction from council, having a workshop on it and looking at some of those specific items that we could do if there were some larger policies put in place in the master plan, then looking at specific things in the code that might promote that if that was the direction that council and the commission wanted to go.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Wieske, I will say I've enjoyed this presentation this evening and I learned a lot, a lot more than what I've read over the last few days. I, I thought this proposal was headed in a different direction than it actually is and that's very positive for me. And I like the ideas. I honestly think that with clarifications to our existing policy, our existing master plan, that we already have a lot of the groundwork laid. It's a matter of improving it and modifying it. And as Fred said a few minutes ago, our document is living and breathing and it's always changing. And this is another change that's required to our master plan policy to meet the current goals and then future goals from today forward, if you will, or two months ago forward. And I look forward to attending at least one of the meetings in a couple of weeks that our council will be having. Hopefully, we'll be able to attend two of them, but I represent a group of the city that's referred to as At-Large. And I plan on attending the At-Large meeting with our council person that night. And I would hope that my fellow planning commissioners would attend the meetings in their wards to find out what their interests are and bring them back to us. In the past, when we've done this, it's really been beneficial for molding and modifying master plans and developing new direction for the future. So, thank you very much for the education this evening.
Can I ask a question? Commissioner Kaufman, could you just give the Food Policy Council some direction on what the next step is in terms of us helping? what the next step is in terms of us helping you with anything you might need to move this forward?
I think the real direction is, once community development gets the authorization from city council to proceed, to probably tie, you know, with them so that we all get together. It's, you know, it's just not the seven of us that sit up here that's going to make that decision. Again, that's going to be, hopefully, the whole community, and that's one of the reasons I ask about the workshops, those types of meetings. And, you know, again, I want to thank you for your presentation. It was very informative, and I have to agree with the other commissioners that, you know, I think there are some things that we probably can change very easily, and then I think there are some other things that we probably have to go with some pretty in-depth type things. So, and I think it was a great idea as far as the university also. I think that's to get their buy-in and their help and those types of things. So, you know, so I hope that answers your question, but...
So it sounds like I'll check back with you on that stuff.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome. Thank you. Okay. We'll go on to the next item on the agenda, and that's public hearings. Our first case is LDC 14-00024, Advanced Healthcare of Reno. Would the applicant please come up and give a presentation?
Nate Swaim of the Boyer Company out of Salt Lake City, Utah. I'm here representing, excuse me, the applicant for the advanced healthcare development proposed herein. We'll ask Tom Gallagher, I'm sure you're familiar with, to come up and talk about some of the nuts and the bolts of the development, but I wanted to just paint a quick picture about the operator of this facility. Excuse me. Advanced Healthcare is an operator of transitional care facilities, which, to give you an example of what that is, if you go in for a knee replacement, this facility is a home where you can go for a short period of time. They do in-house rehabilitation, they have in-house food services, which are very nice in comparison to other facilities, and you do all of your recovery in this facility. It is kind of a bridge facility between home and the hospital for those that are not able to go home and care for themselves in the condition upon leaving the hospital. With that said, they've done strong evaluation on competition in the markets that they enter, and they are by far the superior product. They offer individual occupancy rooms, individual restrooms in each of the facilities. It's much more of a hospitality-based situation than a clinical facility that you might imagine as another rest home or care facility might be. The amenities and facilities are very upscale, different finishes, far more extensive improvements of the interior of the space to make it feel more comfortable and conducive to recovery as opposed to a long-term stay. I'd like to ask Tom to join me now and talk through some of the nuts and bolts of the facility.
Chairman, members of the commission, Tom Gallagher of Seven Engineering Corporation, representing the Boyer Group. First of all, I'd like to thank the staff, both Claudia and Vern, for working very closely with us on this project, and I think we've come up with conditions that we agree completely with. The site, which is located on Coonsley between the Reno newspaper office and John Champion Park, I'm sure you've all seen a hundred thousand times, and the site, we feel, is absolutely ideal for the recommended use. The mixed-use medical regional center zone is the kind of zone this should be in, and everything that within the code, within the zoning, we comply with, with the exception of the floor area ratio. And basically, that's the reason we're here, for the special use permit. In the medical regional center overlay, the floor area ratio is, let me see now if I can figure out how to run this. Maybe. That's good enough, I guess. Okay, this is the proposed site plan, with the Reno newspaper being on the top of the photo and the John Champion Park on the bottom. The site right now is 3.8 acres, but as you can see, that strip between the dark boundary line along the side of the Truckee River, which encompasses the path along the river, is a portion of this parcel, and we're going to do a boundary line adjustment and dedicate that to the park. That side will be fenced, it will be lighted, and everything will be taken care of in that respect, and after, you know, we're going to make it so it's pretty restricted, like wrought iron fence. And I think the staff report says some thorny bushes, and I think after the last presentation, we'll probably make those blackberries instead of pyracanthas. I've never tried to eat pyracantha berries, but I don't think they're very good. Okay. I think the most, the biggest question is the floor area ratio. Basically, the architecture of this building is driven by the use and the facility, the ease of access around the facility with all the care portion in the center and the patient wings on the ends. Not having a multi-story building makes a lot of sense in this case, we believe. It's not something due to the nature of the use, the quiet, we want it quiet and that kind of thing, that we can put an office building on top of or anything like that. So, like I say, the nature of the use really drives the way the building is laid out, and they have, how many other facilities have you got now?
This would be 15.
15 facilities in numerous states, and they've used the same type of floor plan and layout for all the other facilities and very successfully. So unless there's any particular questions, I think the project is fairly well outlined in the staff report, and we agree with everything they have in there. But if there's any specific questions, I'm here, one of the architects, Gary Estes, is here, my project manager, Colin Hayes, is here, and we would be glad to answer any questions that you may have.
Okay. Thank you. I'm sure somebody will have questions.
I look forward to it. Thank you.
And I have eaten pyracantha jelly.
Good evening, Vern Close, Senior Planner. Birds like them, too. The applicant did a very good job of explaining the project and the reasons for the FAR reduction, which is the only reason why this project is here before you. We believe that the operational characteristics, the increased parking demand for the type of use and the amount of staff that's necessary, and also the locational requirements for this type of facility do justify the reduction in FAR. And also, it's just kind of hard to combine this with another facility to move that up. So with that, staff is recommending approval, subject to the conditions in the staff report, and be happy to answer any questions at the appropriate time. Thank you.
Thanks, Vern. Before I have public comments, I'll bring it back to the commissioner for any disclosures.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Wieske, I'll start. I drove by and visited the site.
Commissioner Olivas, I've visited the site.
Commissioner Stapleton, I visited the site.
Commissioner Reno, I've visited the site.
Commissioner Wusley, I've visited the site.
And Commissioner Kaufman, I also visited the site. I'll open it up to public comments. Do we have any requests to speak on public comment? Anybody in the audience would like to speak on public comments? Seeing and hearing none, I'll close public comments, bring it back to the commissioners for questions. Commissioner Stapleton?
Yeah, I've just got one quick question for staff, for Vern. Just remembering the arduous and long process we just went through with all the TODs, is this in a TOD? Or I'm just wondering, what is the, where does the SUP for avarians to the FAR come from?
Vern Close, Senior Planner, this is in the medical regional center, and in the general mixed-use standards, there's the ability to modify or reduce the required FAR through the SUP special use permit process. So that's in the base MU zone, and that's where that is.
So this, and this isn't in a TOD, it's just in that?
No, it's, well, it's, the MU applies to the TODs and the regional centers. So you have the base MU zone with the medical regional center overlay, and if it's not modified by the medical regional center, then you go back to the base MU zone, and that's where the basic standard comes from.
Was that a standard that we changed in our recent process for the base MU to have an SUP to?
No, that's been in there ever since the MU was put in place that I'm aware of. What did occur with the modification is the FAR went from 1.5 to 1. So it got, the base FAR went to 1 in the MU base zoning.
Okay. Thanks. And can you, in an SUP request for that, can you vary it from 1, from what is now 1, down to anything? It's sort of, the SUP is to pick whatever lower FAR you would like?
Correct.
Okay.
As long as it's justifiable and it makes sense for the application that you're looking at.
Okay. Thank you for the clarification.
You're welcome.
Mr. Chairman, Vern, I have a question for you, Commissioner Wieske. Vern, I might have missed it, but in the conditions this evening, I don't see anything, a condition requiring the applicant to put lighting on the north property line, which would be between their proposed property line adjustment and the river?
From what I understand, there are lights for the park to the east, and there are also some lights to the west along the path, and then there is a requirement for, I believe, lighting and security cameras on the north portion of the site for the parking area up there, but the city is going to take over this area right here. That's going to be dedicated to the city with, through the boundary line adjustment process. Obviously, the city council has to approve that, but...
Well, we heard Mr. Gallagher this evening state that there would be lighting along that new proposed property line. Mr. Gallagher, did I misunderstand your comment?
That is correct. That is correct, and we have talked to staff about that. We are going to have lighting along the north side of the building.
That'll be on your, on?
It'll be on our property.
Developers' property, your property, and, okay, thank you very much for clarifying that. Vern, is there any problem, then, that we need to address regarding lighting extending out over the property onto what should and could become, will become, City of Reno property?
I would think if you were going to add some specific condition, that the lighting, it would make sense if it was going to be associated with this project, that it would be incorporated just along the property line there, so that they put it in, and it kind of provides lighting on the path and then also on the north side of the property, unless these folks have objected to that. But that would probably be maybe two or three poles.
Okay.
But if you believe a condition is appropriate to add to that effect, then...
Okay, well, I guess that's my next question for you. I'm not sure that it's appropriate for us to condition it, but then how do, if we don't condition it, how do we make sure that the developer follows through with his plan to put up lighting that's adequate for that walkway along the?
Well, again, if you condition it, then there's no question that it needs to be done, but we could structure it so that it's, you know, a sufficient number of poles to provide lighting for that section that's adjacent to their property. Obviously, they shouldn't have to go past that, but I would think that would be somewhere in the range of two to four poles, something like that.
Okay. So if I were to recommend a condition, and I didn't write anything up, I apologize, that would, a condition number 13, that would require the developer to add four light poles, providing a level of lighting comfortable for pedestrian access on the north side of Would that be?
Again, what we could do is they could just provide a photometric plan that shows that they have coverage, whether it's two poles or four poles, that shows, you know, on the ground that there is sufficient lighting along that section, because I don't know what the specific number should be, but...
That's fine. Could you?
But a photometric, yes, I could put some...
Could you do something real quick while I'm going to discuss something with Mr. Gallagher, and then that'll also give us time to discuss it as a planning commission?
Certainly.
A condition 13? Thank you. Mr. Gallagher, you've heard our discussion about the lighting on the north side of the property, and I would really like to just clarify it with condition number 13, that, and Vern is going to write up some language to it right now, give you another chance to listen to it and agree to it, but at this point, are you in agreement with the condition?
If Vern gets it right.
Okay. That's the if. I understand.
I'm not going to leave that open.
I don't want you to give me a blank check.
I've known Vern for a long time.
I don't want you to give me a blank check, but...
No, we have no problem with that. It was, it's been intended. We spoke about it with Vern and Claudia when we met with them.
Very good.
And it's, it will be incorporated in the plan, so we have no problem with that.
Thank you very much. I have no further questions, Mr. Chairman.
I have just one more, Commissioner Stapleton, quick question for the applicant. On the plans there, the courtyard area, they're on the east side, will that be enclosed?
No. It's going to be open. This facility is manned 24/7, so there are people there all the time. We're not concerned about transients being in there or anything else. I mean, there are other facilities that have the same type thing, and they have no problem with it, so...
So is there a perimeter fence, then, outside the, on the property, on the edge of the property?
On the north, east, and west, but not on the frontage. There is on the frontage? No. There is not on the frontage.
And then there's not either around that courtyard area?
No.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Okay. No other question. I think we're just waiting for Vern, not to put the pressure on Vern, but...
Do you want to be it first?
No, go ahead. You're running out of yourself.
Prior to, this would be condition number 13, prior to issuance of the building permit, the applicant shall plans approved to provide adequate lighting along the north property line for security and visibility along the river path located along the north side of the site. The number and height and location of the poles, lighting fixtures provided shall be verified with a photometric plan.
Thank you, Vern. That covers what I was looking for. Mr. Gallagher, are you okay with condition 13?
He got that one right.
Thank you very much. With that, Mr. Chairman, if you would like a motion, I'm ready to make one.
If we're done with the discussion, go ahead with the motion, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioner Wieske, in the case of LDC 14-00024, Advanced Healthcare of Reno, based upon compliance with the applicable findings, I move to approve the special use permit, subject to the conditions, including the addition of condition number 13, as read into the meeting a few minutes ago by Vern and acknowledged by the developer as being acceptable.
And can you make the findings?
And I can make all of the findings.
Have a motion?
Commissioner Stapleton, I second the motion, and I can make all of the findings.
Okay. I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Passes six to zero. Thank you. Good luck on the project.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Passes six to zero. Thank you. Good luck on the project.
Thank you very much.
Next item on the agenda, LDC 14-00025, Morning Gate 78. And do we have requests to speak for him? Okay. If, if you would like to speak at the public comment, if you'd please fill out a request to speak for him. Okay, for the applicant, please.
Good evening. My name is Sid Turner. I'm Mountain Gate Community Resident.
Oh, sir, wait a second. We'll, we'll call you up for public comments, but let us make the presentation first.
You nodded at me, so I came right in.
And I, I don't have him in front of me anyways to ask you to come up. Thank you. Hi, Melissa.
Hi. Thank you for the record, Melissa Lindell with Wood Rogers. And with me tonight, Bobby Marigan and Steve Thompson with Ryder Homes, and also Steve Strickland with Wood Rogers. This project consists of about 37 acres located north of White's Creek Lane, south of Arrow Creek Parkway, and west of Wedge Parkway in South Reno. The property is in the Wedge, Deroscar, Duxbury Pay specific plan, and that was approved by Washoe County in 1993. The property was annexed to Reno in 2004, and also approved for a 78-lot subdivision in 2008, which has since expired. The project before you tonight is essentially the same 78-lot subdivision that was approved in 2008. The project includes 14 acres of open space along the White's Creek corridor, and that's in the green on the photo. And White's Creek is classified as a disturbed major drainage way, and that requires approval of a special use permit for some minor grading associated with the, the lot development. A trail will be constructed in the corridor, and all the disturbed areas will be revegetated with native plant material. Ongoing maintenance of the trail and the open space will be the responsibility of a landscape maintenance district. Lots in the development will range from about 7,700 to over 19,000 square feet in size. The average is over 10,000 square feet. The subdivision includes sidewalks and landscape parkways, as well as the common open space around the perimeter of the project on White's Creek Lane and Wedge Parkway. There are two access points planned, one on Wedge Parkway and one on White's Creek Lane on the south. There's no direct access on Arrow Creek Parkway. In terms of traffic, the project will generate about 79 PM peak hour trips, which is well under the trip generation threshold, requiring traffic report at, at 100 PM peak hour trips. And this project is going to generate over $325,000 in traffic impact fees. And those traffic impact fees will be available for improvements to the regional roadway system by RTC, including signals as determined by the RTC and the city. We know there's been a lot of interest in a traffic signal at the intersection of Wedge and Arrow Creek Parkway, which is up to the north here. And that matter is, there's a process for determining warrants for traffic signals, and those are determined by the RTC and the City of Reno, and I believe Bill Gahl will be able to address that further if you have further questions on that. In summary, this is essentially the same project that was approved in 2008. It's coming back, which is, is exciting to see, and we're in agreement with all the staff conditions, and will be available for questions at the appropriate time. Thank you.
Thanks, Melissa. Okay, Vern?
Hello again, Vern Close, Senior Planner. Before I get into my brief presentation, I'm going to give a quick overview of what the tentative map process and final map process consists of for the commission and also for the audience. What you have before you is a tentative map. T tentative map is the public process for, in which subdivisions are reviewed. This process notifies the public within 750 feet, and also various agencies of the project to obtain input recommendations and conditions. If approved, the lots are not created until a final map on all or portion of the tentative map is submitted and approved, which is an in-house administrative process. When reviewing a tentative map, approval of or denial of the tentative map must be based on the tentative, tentative map findings and issues relevant to the tentative map. Existing conditions or situations such as traffic that are not materially affected by the proposed tentative map cannot be used as a basis for approval or denial of a project. In other words, there has to be a rational nexus related to the project and an offside improvement such as a traffic signal. Nor can conditions be added that are not directly attributable to the pending tentative map. Once a tentative map is approved, the administrative process is, is the applicant submits a map on all or part of the subdivision that was tentatively approved, and then that is reviewed by state, county, city agencies for compliance with their regulations and also the conditions of approval as applicable. Once the final map is approved, it has to be recorded. Once it's recorded, then the lots can be sold as rural property. Until the final map is recorded, it's still a piece, one big chunk of property that cannot be sold as individual lots. To ensure that all the requirements of the, of the map are constructed, there is a bonding method to secure these improvements for public improvements such as roads, sewers, storm drains, sidewalks. Those are all bonded public improvements, so when a developer comes in and they have a million dollars' worth of improvements that are in that category, they put up that money as a bond, and that is not released until those improvements have been verified as constructed and the bond has been released. The same thing applies to common area or private improvements, such as common area landscaping, trails, those sorts of things. Those are also bonded, and the bonding remains in place until it's verified that those improvements have been made. So that kind of gives you a quick overview of what we're looking at tonight and what happens after the fact to actually create the lots and allow them to be sold. In looking at this project, the applicant did provide a pretty good overview of what this is. Essentially, this is the same project that was approved in 2008 that expired. It has essentially all the same attributes. The only thing that's different in this case is that we're doing a special use permit for modification for grading in a major drainage way, and that consists of very minor edge grading in this area here. It extends generally about 10 to 15 feet from the edge of the lots into the drainage way, just to get the lots up out of the floodplain, and then that will be restored, and that's part of the bonding process to ensure that that does occur. And then also, there's a detention pond that was originally placed right in the middle of the drainage way, and that's been moved back here, and the lots have been reshuffled back this way to maintain the number of lots, but also get that detention basin out of the hundred-year flood. As you know, we did receive a number of comments related to traffic, and they were primarily associated with the operational characteristics of the Wedge-Arrow Creek Parkway intersection, and also for the people exiting onto Arrow Creek from Mountain Gate to the north, which is the subdivision right up in this area here. Also, there's concern with speeding on Arrow Creek Parkway. And again, I, I provided you with all the emails, I think there was four or five, and we did respond back with some general criteria on that. Bill Gahl is here to answer any specific questions you might have. We have looked at, I, I, we are aware that there was a recent traffic count done by the city, and again, Bill can fill you in on those aspects should you have questions on those. Staff is recommending approval, subject to the conditions in the staff report. Be happy to answer any questions at the appropriate time. Thank you.
Thanks, Vern. Okay, Commissioners Disclosures.
Commissioner Weiskie, for the record, I received several emails and had a conversation with the homeowner.
Commissioner Reno, I received the emails, visited the site.
Commissioner Stapleton, I received a call from the applicant's representative, and I received emails.
Commissioner Olivas, I received the emails and visited the site.
Commissioner Weiskie, I received emails, I visited the site, received a phone call from the applicant's representative.
And Commissioner Kaufman, I visited the site, received the emails, and also talked to the applicant's representative.
Mr. Chairman, before we go any further, I have a question for our deputy city attorney, Mr. Shipman. Jonathan, I recall reviewing this project. I thought I was sitting on the planning commission at the time, but I didn't start till 2009, so I must have been chairman of the Ward Two Neighborhood Advisory Board at that time and listened to this project, but we were not making any decisions. We were only passing on comments to city council at that time. Do I need to recuse myself from this item?
No, you're, you're fine. That disclosure should be sufficient.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thanks. Okay, I'll open up public comments. Sid Turner, followed by Jeff Zuppan?
Zuppan.
Zuppan. You have, you have three minutes, please.
Very good, thank you. My name again is Sid Turner. I am a resident of the Mountain Gate Community, and I want to thank your commissioners for giving me an opportunity to speak. I'm also here representing with several homeowners in that community as well, and I'll ask them to stand so they can be, you all can see who they are, because they're not, may not all get a chance to speak. I'm sure they're going to want to talk to you as well.
Could you please speak into the microphone?
Thank you. I'm sorry. As a retired chief officer in the City of Salinas Fire Department, I spent more than 30 years in public service as a firefighter and as a paramedic. Believe me when I tell you that I've had my share of trauma and death-involved traffic accidents. Of particular concern of the intersection of Wedge Parkway and Arrow Creek Parkway, which is in the South Reno area, right in front of Mountain Gate. At this time, there's apartment construction in process, and it's almost in completion, and it's right there next to that intersection, and it's over 200 apartments, about three stories, they're about three stories high. In this last week, I was made aware that this project, this additional construction was going to be improved by this commission of 78 residential units, which will be developed by the Ryder Company on Wedge Parkway. In my career, I've attended many city council meetings and planning commissions to express views on impacted areas in, in the city and different studies to assist on that traffic intersections, et cetera. And I've heard a lot of excuses that we don't have the money in the budget, or because of budgetary constraints, we can't accomplish some of these intersections. I can tell you, though, that when an incident occurred in the City of Salinas, in a similar intersection that's impacted as Wedgewood and Arrow Creek, and this is when I was a captain, and it was in my district, and that intersection, the fire station was right next to that intersection. We fought hard to try to get some type of traffic control there because there was a lot of accidents that were occurring. We didn't even have to get out, pull the engine out to actually go to the scene. We actually just grabbed our equipment and walked to the intersection. But unfortunately, soon after our complaints, one of the city council members, family members, was involved in a serious head-on in that intersection. We lifelighted him out to a trauma center. And what I've learned, that prior to the development of this large complex that we're talking about, the planning condition, commission conducted a traffic impact study. And my understanding is they felt that there's no need for additional traffic controls there. I'm extremely concerned...
Sid, you need to wrap it up.
Okay. I'm extremely concerned that as a member of the Mountain Gate Community, that me, a family member, a friend, and a neighbor, or a neighbor departing the Mountain Gate Community, attempts to cross that intersection of Arrow Creek Parkway and Wedge Parkway, and is seriously injured or fatally injured, will find that there's no current impact study that incorporates that additional amount of people from that big apartment complex that is being completed.
Please wrap it up.
What I'm trying to say, and, and I know you all want a safe intersection. That's, we have no doubt about that. We work with, we work with Bobby and Steve, who are representatives of Ryder, who are also on our board. We know that they want a safe intersection. All we're asking is, let's step back and see what type of impact this three-story, 200 apartment complex is going to do addition to what's already there to that intersection. So that's all we're asking, is just take that time to do that.
Thank you very much.
Study. Thank you.
Okay, Jeff Zuppan. Did I get it right that time?
Close enough, sir.
Okay, thanks.
Commissioners, good evening. My name is Jeff Zuppan. I'm a member of the Homeowners Association. I'm on the board with the White's Creek area that sits in this area, actually kind of this way, just sitting right over in this area right here. The reason why I'm here is, I was here in '08 when this meeting took place initially, and this was actually the, I don't know if you can see that. That was when it was actually half of what they're proposing now. They are doubling the size, and my concern in our Homeowners Association, which I also dropped off, I didn't bring the people with me, I had them all sign a petition and kind of against this, there's a lot of issues that are going on traffic-wise that go on with this, not to mention the impact that it has on the road, White's Creek. I don't know if any of you've walked up or down White's Creek, but it's a beautiful street. There's bushes and trees on both sides of it, and it's one of the last, I think, really nice roads in a rural area in Reno kind of left. But obviously, there's two area, two, back to the, the one that they're proposing. There's two access points here and here, but there's also another access point that comes in from the north, coming down Arrow Creek, and it's a one-way entrance, and it goes right into my community, onto my private, onto our community's private road, which is not part of the county's roads, and it goes straight down into the access of these houses. So what's going to happen is, there's no gate right now, and if you look at the minutes from the '08 meeting, there was some discussion of other issues that you didn't actually mention of, a traffic circle that, for gated, you know, to create a gate that separates this community from our community just up the street on White's Creek. There was provision between Mr. Deroscar, the late Mr. Deroscar, who died last year, and Ryder, that they were going to give a little bit of land to each, build a traffic circle kind of thing, and a gate kind of in the middle so that they could separate it to prevent people from coming down Arrow Creek and into our neighborhood. There's also, I don't know if you've been down on Arrow Creek lately, there's a huge apartment complex that is just packed together that's going to create a ton of extra traffic, and just to the south of that, more of those same types of apartments that are going to create additional traffic. This doubles the traffic flow going in here, and then Arrow Creek and Wedge Parkway... This doubles the traffic flow going in here, and then Arrow Creek and Wedge Parkway are gonna become traffic nightmares, just to kinda follow up with what he was saying, that intersection right there, Wedge and Whites Creek, is gonna become disastrous unless they put in a parking, or a traffic light, or something to, they're, they're racing across the street, because it's four lanes right now, right in that area, but everywhere else it's single lane, so it's not exactly the best-planned intersection that I've seen in a long time, but the traffic circle, traffic flows in and out, people are gonna come through our neighborhood, just to get onto Arrow Creek heading south, which is what they're doing now, a lot of times, from the other neighborhood across from this. So, my point is, I got kids, they play on the street in front of me, I don't want all these people coming through my neighborhood, and I don't want people coming down through Arrow Creek, through my neighborhood, and they come really fast, they blow right through the speed limit, there's no traffic bumps right now, so they, there's nothing to stop them, and my kids play out on that street occasionally, and my wife is constantly yelling at them, get out of the street, because people from other neighborhoods are flying, flying through our private road.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else that would like to speak? Okay, you're more than welcome, afterwards, please fill out a request to speak for.
I certainly will, thank you. My name is Philip Publicer, I'm a resident at Mountain Gate, across the street, and I had come here just to listen, but I just have a quick comment. The initial presenter who put this plan up seemed to present it as, oh, it's just simply a renewal of something that was done in 2008. Clearly, it is not simply a renewal. If this project has doubled in size, and the apartment complex is being built, I don't think those were considerations in 2008, so it's more than simply a renewal, and I think it warrants an extensive look on the part of the Planning Commission. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Yes?
I'm Connie Remy, and I live on a street which is backed up by Whites Creek, it is Castle Pine, and it's a part of the Pine Ridge Association. I am constantly seeing a lot of people coming up and down Whites Creek, enjoying it, walking. They also park on Whites Creek during the soccer season, and when there's a lot of baseball going on, there are people that park up in front of my house, which is a block and a half up from Wedge Parkway. The library is down below, it accommodates a lot of people, not on Sunday or Monday, but the parking is definitely filling up, and today particularly, there are baseball games going on, a lot of people in the library for meetings, it's a dangerous place. I see what happens to the marmots and the quail. That's incidental, that's, as Stalin would say, a statistic. When one person gets killed, that's a true death. It's waiting to happen, and there are constantly accidents at Wedge Parkway and Whites Creek. I hope you will look after the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Kathy, would you please step over and fill out a request to speak for?
Yes.
At the desk? Yeah, thank you. Okay, do we have, sir, did you wanna talk? Sir? Sir, did you wanna speak?
He's gone.
Yes.
He had general public comment, so that would be item eleven.
It was more general, I just wanted to thank the Planning Commission for your good work, I'm John Lidle, I'm new to Reno, I'm gonna see what it, if it's possible to get the Virginia Casino, or the Golden West Motor Lodge up the street there, but I think a lot of the city-
We'll, we'll get you, later down the agenda.
Just wanted to thank, thank you for what you're doing for Reno. Thank you.
Okay, seeing and hearing no one else, I'll close the public comments, bring it back to the Commissioners for questions.
Mister Chairman, I have a question for staff. Bill? When you, when a new development comes in, obviously, are you taking into account all existing traffic, as well as what has been approved for future use, such as the apartments going in across the way?
Well, we wouldn't ask a development to, okay, do, do we look at all the, all the traffic that's being impacted in the area? Absolutely, we do. We, we do have traffic studies on the apartment complex, on the Arrow Creek Town Center, that's actually, let me, we'll go there. There was, the Arrow Creek Town Center project was approved in 2008, and a traffic study was associated with it, and that is there, in that area. The apartment complex that came in, and I believe it's two hundred and eight units, it is on this parcel, up, up there. It also had a traffic study as well. They generate over a hundred peak hour trips, which would require a traffic study for us. This unit, this part, did not require a traffic study, seventy-nine peak hour trips based on ITE, falls below that threshold. And I didn't identify anything as being significant, where it, where its traffic impacts would be, and where it would generate trips, where it would have a significant impact on a specific intersection. If I had identified something like that, I would have, I could have asked for a traffic impact study, but I don't see that as a major impact, and I also, to, to be fair, the apartment complex, though it may have a small impact, I'm sorry, on the Arrow Creek and Wedge Parkway intersection, a predominant generator of traffic and predominant location, everything is heading east on Arrow Creek Parkway. Everything that gets to Arrow Creek Parkway pretty much heads east towards Demone Ranch, the freeway, that area, very little traffic heads west. So this apartment complex lies to the east of the existing Arrow Creek and Wedge Parkway intersection, and we anticipate that a huge majority of the trips will head, take the right out of there, head east, not impact the, the Arrow Creek and Wedge Parkway intersection. And most of the projects, most of the trips coming back in will come, will come westbound, and there is a dedicated left-turn lane for that. So there, there has been mitigation included in the, the Arrow Creek Village Apartments already, and those, that mitigation is being, being, it was being constructed prior to the, the opening of the apartments. For this project, like I said, it didn't reach the level of a traffic impact study, I didn't identify it as having a, a major impact on any of the existing intersections based on total trips, and did not request one.
Thank you, that makes perfect sense. So say we take a street like Arrow Creek, and there's continued development along the way, at a certain point, there's a threshold that's met, that certain, you know, trips of certain traffic, where, you know, a street light is needed, or, or a roundabout, or thing like that, is that something that is handled, you know, because obviously, you're not looking at one project at a time, you're looking at it cumulative, trips.
Yeah, this is handled in coordination with RTC. RTC maintains our regional roadway network, and maintains the traffic modeling for our regional roadway network. They have projected out trips based on current zoning for this area into the future, they've identified, you know, critical intersections, critical roadway segments, that may or may not meet level of service policies, and they have planned improvements for the regional roadway network, which, which Wedge and Arrow Creek are both regional roadways, for, major improvements for regional roadway network in their, their regional transportation plan. They do have a widening project proposed in the 2023 to 2035 for Arrow Creek Parkway, from Wedge to Zalesi Lane, and that would include intersection improvements as, as necessary at that point. Additionally, we would continue to look at, you know, intersections, continue to get looked at, the major intersections through the city and through RTC, they have, you know, annual programs where they do look at, at major intersections, they check for accidents and, and those types of things, and look if there are necessary improvements. Specifically, I'll go on, when the question wasn't directly asked, specifically at Arrow Creek and Wedge, a request came in to do a, a signal warrant for the Arrow Creek-Wedge intersection last summer. Our city traffic department waited until the fall, when the school was back in session, so they can get a more representative sample, and they did this study, I believe that the counts were taken on, on September eighth, but it was in the fall, during the week, they took counts, they did a traffic warrant analysis based on peak hour, it fell way short, based on the, the volumes for Arrow Creek Parkway, they look at, based on those volumes, there's a necessary volume of the either approach roadway, the approach roadway from Arrow Springs, where Mountain Gate is, had a number, let me verify that, it was forty-six turn movements during the, the peak hour, and the nine hundred through movements on Arrow Creek requires basically a hundred peak hour movements from one direction, so they're, they're, they're well short of meeting that. In my, you know, estimation, this project will add, will add trips to, to Wedge Parkway, those that head north to, to Arrow Creek predominantly will make that right turn. It's a, there's a dedicated right turn lane, heading north on Wedge to go to Arrow Creek, and there's an, an Excel lane on Arrow Creek Parkway, so those, those trips should not impact the existing traffic study and the, the warrant analysis.
Thank you, I will save the rest of my questions for later.
Look, Bill, I have a follow-up, kinda to that, but one of the things that, a lot of the emails that we received, and, and they talk about speeding, so, you know, obviously, the Planning Commission, so recommendation, if they're still having speeding problems, is to call-
Call Reno Direct, or call the police department, they'll continue to monitor that, they will, you know, enforcement is the best way to, you know, to reduce speeding, and, and I don't disagree that there's some, some high, high rates of speed in that area.
Other questions? Commissioner Reno?
Commissioner Reno, Bill, so it looks to me that there's a couple of, of different issues on the, the traffic, but going into this complex, is it a ride-in, a ride-out, or, I'm, I'm talking along Wedge Parkway?
On, for this project?
Yeah.
This project has a roadway onto Wedge directly, and it's a full movement.
Full movement, okay.
It's, it's, no, it's, it's full, full, no, full movement, right in, left in, yeah.
Would the, would there be something to warrant a ride-in, ride-out, to help alleviate traffic at Arrow Creek?
Um, at, at this point, it would, I would, I would indicate, I would suggest not to. If you make the Wedge, the access to Wedge Parkway as a ride-in, ride-out, what you will do, you'll drive the traffic the other direction to Whites Creek Lane, they head down Whites Creek Lane, it is a full movement, and they'd, they'd take that if they wanna go, if they wanna go north to, to Arrow Creek, and that would further impact that, right now, as it's designed, it'll kinda split that traffic. Probably the majority of trips that wanna head out of the complex, out of, out of the subdivision, and head to, to Arrow Creek, will probably go to Wedge, because it's not already, there are no other trips on it, right now, there are some trips on, on Whites Creek Lane, so I would, I would recommend against it.
Okay, thanks.
Commissioner Stapleton, Bill, the determination by RTC that this is a critical segment, and that they have this widening plan, which then, it sounds like they could look at for maybe a signal or something else in the intersection there. So this is in the long-range plans, my question is, what is the determination that they can wait until 2023 to 2025 to look at that improvement? What is the measurement they use to put it out that far? And also, is there someone, there isn't someone here from RTC, I'm presuming?
I, there's nobody here from RTC I'm aware of. They, they do traffic modeling, so they have the, the overall regional model, they do the modeling, they look at the most impacted areas, and what meets their level of service criteria. The regional level of service criteria outside the McCarron Loop is, is a level of service D. They look at that for, for segments, roadway segments, and the regional road, and intersections as well. If your intersection fails that level of service, they consider the whole segment would fail that level of service. In this case, the, the Arrow Creek fails that level of service outside of, of their model years, actually, it's at the end, at the 2035. Their, their, their plan basically has short-term, a medium-term, well, the short-term is the first three years, a medium-term is, is ten, and then the long-term is the ten to, so we're basically ten years out, or 2023 to 2035. So if development proceeds at a faster pace than what is modeled in this area, the, the model will continue to pick that up, they could, as, as, as projects are added, as, as buildings are added, they, they continually update that model, they continue to do, you know, we do trip counts and traffic counts in that area, so the model will be updated. If it, you know, they, we run a model every, every two years, basically, where they update their CIP, and, and they update their plan. They don't do a full plan update, but they update the, the items on it, so if, if things progress more rapidly, then, then it would potentially move forward. If I'm wrong, and can things continue to move, and the apartment complex, or this comes forward, we would continue to look, once it's been put on our ticker for, for traffic engineering, they'll continue to monitor this intersection, they would, they will do another, another warrant analysis, and take a look at this intersection again after, after the apartment complex is in, and, and verify that, that the assumptions are correct. If, if we identify a need in, in the intersection, we can put it on our plan, RTC gets incorporated, they, they work in connection with us, we can, they could potentially get in, the RTC plan gets put on that, on the ten-year CIP, and funding could, could be, you know, potentially identified for it as it, as it comes available. As Melissa mentioned, this project would generate about three hundred thousand regional road impact fees, and I believe the apartment complex, close to a half a million.
So if I can just recap, if you don't mind, Mister Chair, Commissioner Stapleton, so there's three ways that this was assessed for need, in terms of increased infrastructure, widening, or a stoplight. It sounds like someone from traffic engineering in the city went out there in September, and looked at the trips, it sounds like you guys looked at it in conjunction with this project, you did an analysis, then it sounds like RTC, because this is an RTC road, also does modeling, and they've done that modeling on this intersection within the last two years, is that right?
They actually just updated their, their full model, so the whole regional roadway network is, was very recently modeled, and it will continue to be modeled and refined, and, and this, this intersection was not identified in their model, as needing, needing improvements.
Or, or it didn't change from 2023?
So.
It wasn't moved up, is what you're saying, in the updated modeling that just happened?
Let's be fair, they, there's, there's two separate things that their model kicks out, their model kicks out segment lengths, or roadway segments, and then it also kicks out intersections, and, and how they've, you know, are impacted. The, the roadway intersection didn't, didn't trigger at all, the segment length from, for Arrow Creek, from, from Wedge to Zalesi was, was triggered, and that's what's in their program, and again, they will obviously address all the intersections during that segment as well.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Olivas, a follow-on question to that, you already answered two of them. This project generates three hundred thousand RTC, and the apartments for about five hundred thousand. Do you know how much Mountain Gate contributed? Just curious how much RTC has to work with to do something here.
Um, I don't know how much Mountain Gate contributed, I don't know when their permits were, you know, for each house, it, it varies based on, on when they were taken, right now, the, the RTC impact fee is about forty-four hundred dollars per, per single-family home. To also talk about RTC and the, the RIF program, there's, there's two ways of paying RIF fees. A lot of construction in the south benefit district, there's, there's three areas, in this south area, a lot of the regional roadway improvements were funded by developers in the, in the early 2000s, and they get, they get credit for their, for their costs associated with that, and if their costs for those roadway improvements were above their use, they have, there's excess credits out there, and that's in the, the existing and RTC RIF program. So it is possible, I don't know what right- So it is possible, I don't know what rider has done or what work they have completed, and I don't, and same thing with the apartment complex, I don't know if they're paying in credits. They can pay half in credits, they can pay half in fees. So there may be actual fees come in, or may not be the full amount that their RIF has actually, you know, charged. So to say that that's the amount of fee that they have to pay, to say that it's actual cash to RTC, that's not necessarily true.
Okay. I guess related to that, this looks like a bit of a dated picture with no apartments there. So does Mountain Gate have additional houses to be built on those finished pads, or are those built out?
They do, they do. Mountain Gate is not built out.
Okay. And then further up, there's some ungraded areas, and I assume that that's not built out yet either. So there's, may or may not be fees, but there's also going to be additional traffic generated within that subdivision itself, too.
There will be additional traffic generated within the Mountain Gate subdivision itself.
Okay.
And again, that's the one, that's, that approach to Arrow Creek is the one that our traffic division, which it's an existing condition, it will continue to increase as Mountain Gate builds out. And that's the one approach leg that our traffic division is interested in, in the warrant analysis specifically.
Okay, yeah, with that left turn, I'd be more interested in that, too, than some of this, actually.
Bill, what's, Commissioner Weiskie, for the record. Do you know what the criteria would be for a roundabout on Wedge Parkway and Whites Creek Road? What that criteria would be for RTC?
I don't know specific roundabout criteria. Typically, what we get into is looking at signal warrants. And if you start to trip those signal warrants, then we look at potentially a roundabout as a solution, as opposed to the signal itself. The roundabout has a lot of advantages over a signal for a lot of situations. There, it is something in talking with RTC planning that, you know, it's something that's a possibility at this intersection when they come into improvements. But typically, the roundabout wouldn't be addressed until the same time that a signal would be addressed. If there's a need for a signal warrant, something to have that impact on the through movement for Arrow Creek, then a roundabout would be an option that they would address as well.
Thank you. Melissa, I have a question for you, please. Melissa, the approval that you referred to earlier in 2008, how many homes were approved in that initial approval?
Seventy-eight.
And what are you approving, and what are you showing now for build-out?
Seventy-eight. I think that there was a conceptual plan that was put up that was never brought forward, and we're not aware of that, but we're aware of coming to the city of Reno and receiving approval of the seventy-eight lot subdivision. And I think Vern can just clarify that, too.
Okay. Did you handle the 2008 approval, or was that by another firm?
It was handled by Wood Rogers, Stacy Huggins.
Okay. Do you recall in any of your research, the roundabout at the west end of Whites Creek, Whites Creek Road?
Not a roundabout, a turnaround. There is a condition for a turnaround because Whites Creek Lane is public up until this point.
Right.
And then it turns private, and I believe there's private signs, private road signs. And we are conditioned for a turnaround, and we do have a turnaround design that we have presented to Bill Gahl, so the public can turn around before hitting any private lane situation.
Okay. And at what point, either in the tentative map process, the final map application, or construction and development, does that turnaround become part of the documents and get constructed?
Okay, it is actually condition number eighteen. Prior to the approval of a final map containing, you know, primary vehicle vehicular access to Whites Creek Lane, the applicant shall construct a vehicular turnaround on Whites Creek Lane at the west end of the site to the satisfaction of community development. So that is covered under condition eighteen.
Okay. Thank you very much. Vern, I have another question for you, and then I'm done, Mr. Chairman. Vern, if I understood you right in the beginning, when you started the staff presentation, that what we're looking at tonight is a tentative map? It's not conditions of roadways outside the map, nor can we condition, add conditions to this proposal. Am I correct, or did I misunderstand something you stated earlier?
Vern, close senior planner, yes, we're looking at a tentative map, and it's subject to the findings required to approve a tentative map, and any conditions that are directly associated. In other words, there's a nexus related to what this project is doing in the area. So the answer to your question is yes, you're correct.
Okay, thank you. I have no further questions, Mr. Chairman.
If I could, I would like to verify that the previous map that expired in 2008 is essentially the same as this, where I had seventy-eight lots, just to verify that, because that's what I used to review this project with. So it's essentially the same project that was done in 2008.
Okay, thanks, Vern. Were both these just brought to you?
Yes, they were. I didn't understand that the planning commission operates differently than the council, and that your public comment is technically closed.
Yeah. So I'll read these in. And I did close public comment. And Chuck Cecil, I'm sure you were probably here when, are you Chuck Cecil?
I am.
Okay.
I'm Sarah.
Yeah, so, and you're just opposed because of the traffic. And Jeff Zuppan, he added, need to address the west flow traffic out of the complex on Whites Creek through my HO residency residences and to Arrow Creek on the right out of the private road. They are doing it from a current subdivision on Whites Creek to Arrow Creek. So I'll read those in, but again, we're in discussion, and public comment was closed. So commissioners, any other questions you want to have discussion?
We're into discussion, then?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. You know, as I looked at this project and read all the concerns about the traffic, it looks like there's more than just this project that's being concerned about the traffic. There's a lot of different issues around there. And looking at what this project generates, it is very little, but it doesn't help the situation, and I understand that. But looking at this project by itself, I don't see how we can make that nexus that it's fault that there's traffic problems around the area. And for that reason, I think this is a good project moving forward. I would say to the private roads, there should be gates put up if it's a private road, don't let people cross from Arrow Creek down to Whites Creek. Things can be done to kind of stop the traffic that way. And looking at this, just like Bill Gahl said, it looks like most of it's going to go onto Wedge Parkway and take a right onto Arrow Creek and be out of the area pretty quickly. Even along Whites Creek, I doubt that, I mean, I don't know how people are going to travel, but my guess is they'll probably head toward the Wedge Parkway. They may go down, the people in the vicinity over here by Whites Creek, but otherwise, I think they're going to get to Wedge, and they're going to get to Arrow Creek as fast as they can. And for that reason, I'm going to approve, you know, I'm going to recommend approval of this.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Weiskie, for the record. I recall this project very well when it came through the NAB, and we spent a long time discussing the issues and the merits of the project. How many houses, how many trips, what could be done to protect the existing homeowners to the south that share Whites Creek Road? And in going through this, the conditions that staff put together, you know, I compliment Vern for not changing it, because there was a lot of community input that was sent forward to the planning commission at that time to recommend for approval. And, you know, I'm, the area has continued to grow, it will continue to grow. I know in talking with Bill Gahl and people from RTC, not specifically on this project, but on many projects, as these projects come before them, they continue to add to the traffic counts, and they continue to look at what's warranted and what's needed for traffic calming or traffic devices. And because of that, I mean, we've got a park that's grown up now, we've got a library that's grown up in this area that wasn't there when, they were planned, but they weren't completed and used to the degree that they are today. You know, I see that it being a traffic issue. This is something for the neighbors to get together in whole, and quite possibly these new neighbors, and take rider homes with you folks to the RTC. This is an RTC-level issue, and it needs to be dealt with at RTC. I can't make the nexus and tie it in either, Commissioner Reno, and I will be supporting you. And for you neighbors, I've got a couple of suggestions for you. And for those of you that have a pencil and paper, you might want to write this down. Washoe County Public Works Traffic Engineer is Clara Lawson, L.A.W.S.O.N. Her phone number is 328-3603. Contact her about traffic, and continue to contact her regarding traffic. The other phone number that I have for you is for Reno Direct. That phone number is 334-4636. That's 334-4636. And continue to make traffic complaints to Reno Direct, and Reno Direct will then forward it to traffic or to Reno PD or Washoe County sheriffs, and you will get traffic officers out there. You will get the traffic slowed down. And if it doesn't work, and RTC hears enough from you guys and traffic engineers, that you will get traffic calming or traffic-stopping devices put in much quicker. The louder you are, the more joined together you are, the better off you will be. But based upon the conditions that we and the findings that I have to make tonight, the conditions placed on this project, I will be voting in favor of the tentative map. Thank you.
Commissioner Reno, really quick, I just want to reiterate, I just couldn't make that nexus. And for all of you out there, I don't disagree that there is a traffic problem here, but I couldn't say that this development is the fault of that traffic problem. And I like how Commissioner Weiskie said it, please be the squeaky wheel. You'll get something done there. Just, RTC is really the board that you need to go to. Thanks.
Commissioner Stapleton.
Commissioner Stapleton, for the record, I want to echo some of what my fellow commissioners said. What we're being asked to decide on here tonight is the approval of a tentative map, and there's a lot of things that go into that. Infrastructure is just one of those things, one of those factors that we have to look at in approving whether a new subdivision of this size is appropriate to go, where the applicant has asked for it to go. The measures that the city, as well as RTC, uses to determine whether this particular project has an impact that warrants, you know, additional infrastructure in terms of a traffic light or something like that. Bill gave us a summary of those. The city looked at the traffic, RTC looks at that. It sounds like they have modeling that's updated every two years. And those are things up here on the planning commission that we see often. They use these models, and when these things come before us, if they need a traffic light, and if those models, which I trust and which we see, you know, work, indicate that there's a need, they have no problem bringing that to us. And it sounds also like it's not a funding issue. There's bonding that's there, as well as impact fees the developer has been required to pay. So it really is, you know, we have these mechanisms in place to measure where, if there really is a need for a traffic light, and it sounds like it's just not there yet, and we have to hold this project to the same standard that we do throughout the city. We hear projects throughout the city, and they're, you know, they use the same modeling, and, you know, we can't give special treatment to this one project because there may be extra speeding. If the number of trips isn't there, then the number of trips isn't there, and we can't justify putting an extra infrastructure where it isn't warranted, and sometimes actually may increase danger if you put something in that isn't warranted. So I would just, I would just, you know, all that being said, it sounds like that there's a speeding issue, and I would echo the suggestions of my fellow commissioners, especially Commissioner Weiskie, that you guys have a recourse for dealing with that, and that's to call Reno Direct and be the squeaky wheel, and have them, you know, go put a speed trap out there and have them figure out a way to deal with that, if that is in fact the issue. Also, I'll take this opportunity to lament the fact that the neighborhood advisory boards were abolished, because that was also a great avenue to bring concerns just like this to your council person, as well as to the city, to do, to request traffic studies. So earlier in the meeting, our community development director, I think, gave a list of some of those meetings coming up. You guys are in Ward Two. I would go to that community meeting and voice the concerns of the speeding issue to your council person, who I believe is Councilwoman Zadra in this area. So I would do that. I would go to that community meeting, I didn't write it down, but it's on the city's website, and let your council person know that there's a speeding issue here. In terms of the traffic light, you know, I trust the modeling, I think they're not just there yet, but they're not there yet, but it sounds like the city's going to keep looking at it. And I would also keep calling the city and the engineer from Washoe County that Commissioner Weiskie mentioned, and keep asking them to take a look at this. And then when it's warranted, you know, then's the time to ask for it. And I think in terms of our approval of this, it's true, we need to be able to find that nexus. You know, we have to be able to, if we disprove this project, because, you know, there's a desire not to have it for the amount of traffic, but we can't prove through the modeling and through what we've heard from the engineer that the traffic isn't there, then we can't make that, you know, we have to be able to make that finding. We have to be able to say, yeah, we can show that this is needed, and we can't disprove it if we can't show that it's not needed. So, you know, we can't not approve this project because of that one thing. And so that said, I would encourage the citizens that came, thank you for coming tonight, and to, you know, use those other avenues and be the squeaky wheel if there really is a speeding issue here. And so with that, I'll just say that I can support the project, and I would encourage you guys to use some of these other avenues, including also going to RTC to address this problem. Thanks.
Okay, Commissioner Olivas.
Commissioner Olivas, not too much more to add, I guess. I mean, without the nexus, I don't think this one project causes the problem or solves the problem on its own. It's a collective problem. As far as Whites Creek and the private road, I have to apologize to Mr. Zuppan for driving through your private road while I was out there investigating. I could see where you're going to get more traffic, too. So I don't know the solution to that either, but not much more to add collectively to what's already been said.
Commissioner Weiskie, for the record. Well said by my fellow commissioners. I was very interested to hear what, obviously, you guys had to say, as well as our representatives and our fellow commissioners. And I feel the same way, and I don't think any one of us disagrees with that there's a potential traffic issue out there with speeding, you know, hard of, you know, ease of access. And, but, just following up on what they said, you know, RTC is the appropriate forum, as well as traffic studies, setting up speed traps, et cetera. Well said by, like I said, the rest of my commissioners. So for that, I can be support this project as well.
Okay. Commissioners, if I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
And we need to divide this into two motions, actually.
Okay. In the case of LDC 1400025, Mountain Gate 78, based upon compliance with the applicable findings, I move to approve the tentative map- findings, I move to approve the tentative map subject to conditions. And I can particularly make condition five, but I can make all the conditions.
Have a motion, a second?
Commissioner Stapleton, I'll second the motion. I can make the findings as well.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Pass the six to zero. Second motion, please.
In the case of LDC 1400025, Mountain Gate 78, based upon compliance with the applicable findings, I move to approve the special use permit subject to conditions. I can make findings A and B and all the findings, but particularly A and B.
I have a motion. Can I have a second?
Commissioner Stapleton, I second the motion. I can make the findings.
I have a motion, a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Pass six to zero. Thank you. Good luck on the project. We're going to take a short five-minute break. Okay, Planning Commission is back in session. The next case is TXT 14-0006.
Good evening. For the record, Nathan Gilbert, Associate Planner. City Council has directed staff to draft modifications to the development code in order to exempt certain accessory solar structures from the discretionary review process, mainly special use permit review and site plan review. In most instances, accessory solar structures are allowed by right. However, in certain circumstances, special use permits are required when they're installed on a non-residential use adjacent to residential zoning if it's over 1,000 square feet. And since 2008, the Planning Commission's reviewed and approved about 10 of these applications. The draft ordinance proposes text modifications to exempt these structures from discretionary review process and also adds a requirement to ensure that potential glare impacts are addressed during the building permit review process. Council's initiation identified these exemptions to apply only for institutional land uses like schools and churches. Our staff recommends that these exemptions be applied to all non-residential uses as illustrated in Exhibit B in your staff report. I'm available for any questions if you have them.
We'll do disclosures first. Any disclosures? Seeing and hearing?
Commissioner Stapleton, thank you. I did have a conversation a couple of months ago with an interested party in regards to this ordinance change.
Thank you. Okay, before commissioners get into discussion, a request to speak, public comments. I have Rich Hamilton followed by Chris Baker. You have three minutes and please state your name.
Howdy. My name is Rich Hamilton, for the record. I am the Director of Business Development for BlackRock Solar. We're a local nonprofit. We're just down the street at Bell Street. We have turbine, wind turbine there. And as a nonprofit, we, by mission, serve other nonprofits, schools, underserved communities, tribes, folks who by and large have a hard time paying for their projects. In fact, if you work with me, it probably means you can't afford your solar array. And to that end, I was the person who instigated this. I approached staff with this because we are, I'm seeing my second school that is having a hard time building a solar array because of the added cost and time of an SUP. I have other folks who are further down the pipeline that are also expressing interest in solar arrays. But again, this would be an added cost to the folks that are our clientele that really can't afford it. And when we put solar on their roofs, that means, or in their parking lots, that means that it frees up funding to do program. It frees up money to help the community. And that's our interest. With that in mind, you know, we have built 70 projects, in fact, more than 70 projects in Nevada. We've had one instance of glare of which we caught after the fact and we fixed it on, you know, because it's our fault, we built the array. And that is really the only real impact. Solar does not use water unless you want to wash your panels if you don't think the rain's doing it well enough. Doesn't pollute, doesn't make sound. The only real impact is you can see it. During certain times of the year, if you're in the right spot at the right time, you can be impacted by glare. And that's just due to the angles of the sun. If you're a responsible contractor, you can mitigate that before you build it. There's actually a free tool that Sandy and National Labs has that we actually use before we build an array. So we don't have this problem. And then again, after the fact, you can probably mitigate, if there's an unforeseen impact, you can probably mitigate it from there. So it's a really easy, easy problem not to have and it's an easy problem to fix if you do have it. It's just changing the tilt on the panels a little bit. Otherwise, again, there's no, there are no real negative impacts with solar power. And for our clientele, this is more, the added cost of an SUP is a negative impact and it's something that threatens their ability to put solar on their facilities and to do good things for the community. And that's why we're here advocating for this change. And I would more than love to answer questions that you have and hopefully find a way that we can get this done. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Chris Baker.
For the record, Chris Baker, Manhart Consulting. Like Rich, I'm here to speak in favor of this proposed text amendment. As a planning consultant, I understand that the approval of this amendment will actually cut into our workload. We get that, we understand it, but we feel more importantly, you know, anything a municipality can do to cut upfront costs for solar installations, you know, streamline the process, we feel is a good thing. And I think this text amendment does exactly that. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, commissioners, any questions?
Commissioner Stapleton, I have a question for staff. The language says solar structured classified as accessory alternative utility systems. Is there a definition somewhere in the code that you could point me to as to what exactly that is? And is there a megawatt threshold or?
There is. In 2008, when we evaluated, it was removing barriers to green development was the case. We looked at any impotence to green development in code. One of the things we identified were accessory alternative utility systems. They included small wind and solar, a few others, but primarily wind and solar that we developed. So they're in allowed use in all zoning districts as long as they're accessory. That means they have to be subordinate to the primary use. So when you're talking in size of scale, you know, if you have, you know, a four-unit apartment complex and you have, you know, an accessory solar panel, it would have, accessory would be subordinate to the primary use. So the power demand of that four-unit complex would, you know, would be less than, say, a hospital where they're, you know, they may have a much larger solar array needed to be, it would still be accessory to the primary use.
So is there a definition of that, though?
There is in code, 1824 as to what it is. But essentially, it needs to be accessory to the primary use. If all you had on the site, on a particular site, was a solar, you know, a solar panel, solar array or wind turbine, that's not accessory. If it was producing in significant excess power, so if they had more than the demands of that particular existing building, that's no longer accessory. It needs to be subordinate.
Do we have, do we have that piece in front of us where that definition is?
The actual definition is, you know, we weren't modifying it, but it was, it did reference standards that we have, existing standards. That was in your staff report.
So the definition of subordinate or accessory, does it have any other criteria that makes it accessory or subordinate besides the fact that it's not the primary use? Is there any size or any other criteria that would?
There's no size or, you know, kilowatt threshold, no?
And then last question, is there, are there setbacks associated with an accessory alternative utility system?
Would be the, well, for a solar panel, it would be the same as any other accessory structure per that zone.
Okay. So for example, in a residential zone?
Typically five feet side and rear. It has to be out of the front setback entirely.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Wieski, I'm ready to make a motion if you're ready.
I have one question.
I have a question too.
Why not wind in part of this? Wind power also? And, you know?
The threshold, the reason these solar panels in particular have triggered at least 10 special use permits is because of the area that they assume. So when you hit over 1,000 square feet, now you're in a non-residential development, now you need a special use permit. Wind turbine doesn't trigger that. We have existing standards that allows them as an accessory use with just base standards. It's, it's, it never, it won't trigger the site plan review or special use permit for accessory wind structures.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Reno, I don't know if you can answer this, but is there technology to reduce glare on the solar panels? Do the panels themselves have ways to reduce glare?
To reduce glare? Mr. Hamilton is probably our botanical expert here, but my understanding, when we developed the original ordinance, is, you know, I mean, solar panels are meant to absorb as much energy as possible. And when we met with industry representatives, when we initially drafted this stuff in 2008, you know, glare was considered just a super remote possibility. It is a special use permit finding that, so that would be the case in that instance. But it can happen. And so talking with the industry reps and saying, you know what, that's maybe the one benefit that we could get out of a discretionary review is we have to make a finding that it won't create a glare. Apparently, you know, the free software that's available, it's a standard, it's easy for anybody to do. And so we recommend making it a baseline standard for all solar structures. Run this software program and tell us if it creates a glare or not. And if it does, let's mitigate it.
Mr. Hamilton, can you explain this software program? How exactly it works? What do you, is it the angle of the sun? Is that what you're calculating? What's going on there? I don't understand.
Richard Hamilton. Yes, it's through Sandy and National Laboratories and it's based on a Google Earth and you actually, I mean, it's so easy even, I can do it, is that you plot the array on a map, you actually then plot your observation points and the elevation of those above the ground, the elevation of the array and the tilt. And that will give you graphically, in fact, I have some examples of that here, graphically what the impact is and what time of day, what day of the year even. And it's, it's not an exact tool because it doesn't take into, you know, vagaries of the ground. And that's why I said earlier that we had one that we did not anticipate just because of the angle east to west of the ground. But for the most part, it's going to get you in the ballpark and let you know if you have a problem or not. And in using that tool, we've had, again, one out of 70 arrays.
Maybe I'll ask you the same question. Obviously, you want to collect the sun, but is there a way to reduce the glare on them? Just the way they are?
Not so much because the manufacturers, you know, they are meant to absorb all the photons that hit them. So it's really when they're at a shallow angle and it's sort of bouncing off the glass, it's steeper angle, they absorb very, very well. So it's very short periods of time that you would have glare impacts, literally five to say 15 minutes in the morning or the afternoon. There's, if I could ask one other, or, I'm sorry, go on.
No, that's all the questions I have.
Ms. Stapleton had a couple of questions and I don't think they're in the code for him.
No, I'm good.
That were about size. Okay. Because there is an answer for that that's also self-limiting.
Okay. I'm good. Thank you, though.
Okay. Commissioner Wieski.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. In the case of TXT 14-0006, discretionary review exemption for certain accessory solar projects, based upon compliance with the applicable findings, I move to recommend that City Council approve the text amendment by ordinance with the modification specified in Exhibit B and I can make all of the findings.
Have a motion?
Commissioner Stapleton, I'll second the motion. I can make the findings.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Pass the six to zero. Next item on the agenda, staff announcements. Vern, you're the senior staff person. No announcements. Commissioners' suggestion for future agenda items. Seeing, hearing, none? Public comments. John, did you want to make a public comment? You got up here once before or?
Just basically thank you for your good work.
Whoops, you need to come up to the podium, please.
Just saying thanks.
Okay. All right. Commissioner Stapleton.
Yeah, I just want to make a public comment. Thank you, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Stapleton. I just wanted to, I wasn't here the last meeting, but I think it was a meeting before that, we had a discussion on working with our city council liaisons on some of the different outcomes that we've been having between the Planning Commission and the city council. I just wanted to report that, I think Commissioner Wieski reported that he had done the same at an earlier meeting. I reached out to my city council liaison, which is, since I'm Ward Three, it's Councilman Delgado, just to reach out and say, we're here for, you know, information, you know, we're where the planning process lives and did a lot of work. And so I just wanted to encourage my other fellow planning commissioners to do the same in hopes that we can increase the conversation and education that happens around why we make the decisions that we make. And I also, Commissioner Wieski said earlier in the meeting that he was planning on going to the community forum for the at-large council member to discuss the master plan as well as the comprehensive plan, some of the issues that were brought up during the food policy presentation. And I also am going to go to the community forum for my councilperson and I just would encourage other commissioners to do the same and that that would be a great way for us to really start off on the right foot and engage in that process. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. I just want to make one comment too. The second item on the agenda today, that was great conversation. Everybody kept focused on exactly text amendment. And I thought the community that was here also who wanted to speak or had an issue really came away understanding why we made the decision we made. I think that's part of our job. So great job, all of you guys and gals. Commissioner Wieski.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would just like to publicly say thank you to Reno's legal staff for court case that they just went through regarding billboards to where a decision of ours and city councils had been appealed and taken actually to court. And last Friday, it was in the paper that Judge Flanagan ruled in favor of the city of Reno. So Jonathan, thank you. And to our former Assistant City Attorney, Marilyn Craig, thank you for your representation of us. The sitting members today on the Planning Commission and the former sitting members who sat through a couple of years of listening to billboards and modifying the ordinance, that kind of is a pat on our back that we listened and we were making some good decisions. Although it's going to be appealed, it'll be interesting to see what happens with the appealed court case. But more good luck to you. Thank you.
If I could just say thank you first off, but I'd like to say, that was an amazing record. You guys, I mean, it was literally this thick. And throughout, you know, it was, it was nice because I think, quite frankly, it was one on the record. I mean, it was, it was clear that, you know, the, from every, everybody from the beginning to the end took this issue very seriously and really tried to balance these very disparate interests. So thanks again for all the hard work. So thanks again for all the hard work. Yeah.
Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second. All right. Adjourn. Thank you, everybody.